Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting of the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee to order. First item on the agenda is public comment on any matter not listed on the agenda. Anyone here wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll continue with making introductions of the committee members and staff. I have to my right Supervisor Dennis L. Lawton, Supervisor Al Matano, Supervisor Patrick Miles, and possibly will be joined later by Supervisor Jerry Bullock. Also, we have Youth Governance Member Sam Fisher here this evening. Also, we have Zoning Administrator Roger Lane, Assistant Zoning Administrator Dan Everson, and Director of Planning and Development Todd DiAlonte. I'm Mary Kolar, I'm the Chair of the Committee. So, the background or the rules for our committee hearing, the committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use permit applications. Any persons wishing to speak in favor or in opposition must fill out a white registration form, and they're over there on that podium, to be able to speak and submit it to the staff. When a petition is called, the petitioner will be asked to come to one of these chairs up here. We ask that the petitioner state their name, address, the petition request, and reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to five minutes to address the committee. The order of registrants is the petitioner first, followed by any other persons wishing to speak in favor, then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers will be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide rebuttal to the opposition. The petitioner will be given three additional minutes. All speakers will address the committee, the members up here, not individuals in the audience. There will be no running debate. The committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the zoning division. The deadline for towns to submit an action report to the county is the Thursday prior to this meeting date. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting, however, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting of the committee. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and staff an opportunity to work out matters between parties. If the town's action has been submitted and there is no opposition to a petition, the committee may act on the petition and refer it to the full county board. If the committee passes a petition unanimously, your presence at the county board may not be necessary. However, if the petition is controversial, it is advised that you attend the county board meeting. Committee action on conditional use permits is the final action of the county. These applications are not referred to the full county board. The next county board meeting is September 7th. The next ZLR committee meeting is September 5th. Okay, our first item on our list on the agenda is rezone petition 11,143, Robert J. Van Dahlwick. Is anyone here for the petition? And I do have a person here wishing to speak in opposition. Bob, did you want to speak?
Sure.
And you checked both.
Yes, I did. I want you to look at that.
Well, do we know if the petitioner is going to be here or not?
We call them, we email them.
I'm just raising because if there's opposition, typically...
Just hear me out, I don't...
Typically, without opposition, as it is a public hearing, the petitioner has the opportunity to react to the opposition.
Are you Mr. Dahlwick?
No.
Are you representing Mr. Dahlwick?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Supervisor Miles.
Well, I was just wondering if we should table, wait for a bit, see if the petitioner arrives?
You want to hang out for a while and see if you can give them? I don't think our petitions will take too long, in fairness to him, or we'll postpone due to...
As I was discussing with the staff person prior to it there, we were trying to figure out, it's more for information, I am the property owner that rounds this property here. And I just wanted to give you just clarification of what's going on around the property currently. And really, what he's asking to do, I don't have a problem with that, I just don't want to see it, you know, to be a snowball effect through the rest of the area.
Okay. So, do you want to hang out for a while? Just can see if he's going to show up.
Well, I was kind of, I'm a kind of a scheduler myself tonight.
Okay. If he doesn't show, I mean, we won't take any action. Do we have town action?
Yes, we do.
Did you have anything else for the committee? Go ahead, since we gave you the time.
Thank you. I'm Bob Apoff, property owner. I live at 4561 Meadowview Road in the town of Dunn. We farmed in this area since 1866. The land that is immediately to the south and to the west of this property is land that we own and we currently farm. It also gets the application of the manure from our hog operation that's to the south of Meadowview Road there. I fully understand the want of the applicant, and I support him in the conditional use that he's asking on the house in there, both on the conditional use on the LC as well as where he'd like to put it there. My concern is to make sure that the balance of the property, the northern part, does not at some point in time be another home site. The land that we own on that side of Meadowview Road has been permanently protected in agriculture and open space in 1997. And I mean, it's permanently protected, so any changes that you make within this area, you have to realize the impact that you have on that land as well. And we recognize, we know that the applicant initially had some other plans for it, and they were denied, and we appreciate that idea. Again, I just want to make you aware, this is a farming area, livestock operation is involved here, and that we do generate orders. I mean, the production facilities are probably, you know, less than 500 feet from where he's probably proposing to put a home. We're going to be as good neighbors as we possibly can. We've been good with Mr. Van Dahlwick, we support him, but at the same token, he's not always going to be owning that home or that property. Yet our long track record with it shows that we've, you know, been good stewards in the area and been there for a long time. And with the support of the community and the investment that's been made, we think it's going to continue that way. So, again, I apologize for putting it down as opposition, but again, I just want you to be aware of the uniqueness of this area. One of the very few areas that you have in the Dane County, where the public and the private work together to protect agriculture and open space permanently. It borders this Centennial Park to the east, and you have the Dog Park as well as the Frisbee Gulf in the same area. So, it's very unique, so I just caution you as you move forward, make sure that you've got the i's dotted and the t's crossed. So, again, thank you for giving the opportunity just to comment on it.
Okay, and I just, I do want to say, so you checked both.
I checked, and he has clarified that it's not opposition, but... It's not total flat-out opposition. I'm not totally flat-out. I just want you to be aware of the nature of the area that we've got there.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I have just a couple of things. One, I wasn't trying to not hear your, it's just, you know, practice to...
Understand.
If there's concerns raised, that the petitioner has a chance to react, but it sounds like you've probably had some of these conversations with the petitioner.
He's never talked to me.
Oh, okay. You seem familiar with it, so I thought maybe you went to the town of Bloom Grove.
I went to the town of Bloom Grove initially when the proposal talked about having apartments that are making space available for machines there. At that time, I went to the town of Bloom Grove and expressed to them that I understand the need, and it's no different than a farming operation where you bring a son into the operation, you need a second residence. I get it, I understand it. Again, I just want you to caution us that, again, my concern is that we look at the zoning there, in the past, sometimes people would look at that and realize, well, there is actually an opportunity for two more homes, not just one.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, if I could have a motion to postpone due to lack of presence of the petitioner. You want that postponed for if he shows up, or...
Well, that would be tabling, so we'll look to table.
Good.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on tabling? Seeing none, all those in favor of tabling until the petitioner arrives? Say aye.
Aye.
And so, that is tabled. Next is rezone petition 11,170.
There is a CUP affiliated, so why don't we...
Do you want to add that to your motion?
I could add this to the motion. Why don't we just add it?
I think we all know.
Right.
Make sure the answer is complete.
The motion...
Motion by Matano, seconded by Miles to table the CUP conditional use permit.
The rezone and the... CUP together.
Got it.
Okay. Now we're ready? No, it's good. 11,170 rezone petition, Laura Kirk.
I'm her husband Brad Warren.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Again, Brad Warren, 2904 McConnell Road, Stone, Town of Pleasant Springs. I'm looking to rezone to allow my animal unit. It's pretty simple, straight up, that they sound unanimously approve it and no neighbors any issues.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Pleasant Springs has approved this petition contingent upon a deed restriction being placed on the property that states that all structures housing livestock must be located at least 50 feet from each side and rear lot line and 100 feet from the lot line abutting the R Residence zoning district. And there is also to be a maximum of 50 chickens permitted on the property.
Move approval of the town conditions.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval with the town conditions. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
Next is rezone petition 11,171. I have Eugene Law in the Town of York.
Hi, my name is Joe Brubaker, I'm representing the Eugene Law Estate.
Okay.
So, the property is located in 7169 Marshall Road, Waterloo, Wisconsin. Current zoning district is A1. It's 120 acre farm, all zone agricultural. And my change request is to take the farmhouse, five acres, and change it to rural home, RH2. Reason for change is we want to separate, the family wants to separate the farmhouse from the 120 acres so that we can save the farmhouse, is what the family wants to do. So, separating existing residents from the farmland is one of the reasons for change.
Anything else you'd like to add? Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of York has approved this petition with no conditions.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. And it's approved.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kolar, who seconded that?
Next is rezone petition 11,172, Peoples Community Bank in the Town of Black Earth.
I'm John Alveson, 6381 Coon Rock Road Arena. I'm representing the Peoples Community Bank. They're proposing to create approximately a 22-acre lot, zone to be A2, and approximate a 7-acre lot to be zoned RH2. There's a Ridge Road, it's about 8% or 9% that I think is going to be utilized for the north lot. There's steep slopes on that lot, but there's an existing road that's well within the town's slope limits. There's an intermittent stream on the southerly lot that we're going to need to avoid, comply with shoreline zoning. We have a county highway driveway permit, but we're going to have to move that 100 feet north or so to avoid the Chapter 30 for DNR, so that's in the process, so...
Anything else you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Black Earth has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And a vote for no from Miles, and so it is approved.
Thank you.
Rezone petition 11,173, Daniel Legros in Town of Primrose.
Hi, my name's Daniel Legros, 301 Second Street, New Polaris, Wisconsin. I'm filing to change a few woodland lots from EH1 to RH2. We had to reconfigure the lots due to access issue for the one lot to the township road instead of the county, and that's what the preliminary survey was done for. That's going to be all I have.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The State DOT did comment on this petition. They stated that you cannot access to state highways. The access for these two lots will be on Old Highway 69. The Town of Primrose has approved this with no conditions.
Staff reports has a suggestion on the deed restriction of the A22 lot?
That is correct. That prohibit residential development on the A2 parent 2 lot, that is, the lot that is north of Old Highway 69 due to the lack of housing density rates.
And I'll call them with that condition.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with the condition. Any further discussion?
Yep, that's fine, that's agreed, that that lot will be saved for...
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Okay, anyone here for rezone petition 11,174?
Yeah.
Okay, if you could turn in your white sheets?
I'm ready.
All right. Thank you.
I'm Ted and Jerry Schumaker, 1691 County Highway 8, Section 13, Town of Dunkirk. We want to change R1 Resident District to A1 Exclusive, A1 Exclusive Agriculture to RH2, R1 Resident District to RH2. And if you look at the map, we're trying to straighten out our lines there, see what it's at an angle. And there's an outbuilding on the right-hand side there, and we're trying to get into that area where RH2 will now be.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone wishing else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Dunkirk has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is rezone petition 11,175, Jeffrey Zimmerman in the Town of Sun Prairie.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Zimmerman, owner of the land at 4973 Ridge Road, Deerfield, Wisconsin. And I want to change it from A1 Exclusive Agriculture to R1 just for the old farmhouse. I want to separate the farmhouse off from the farm.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Sun Prairie has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval.
We have a motion and a second? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Okay, I don't have 76 or 77.
Well, 76, they're going before the Town of Dunn tonight, so...
Anything on 75? Jeffries, oh, that was, never mind, that was 75, 76. And, okay. Petitioner, anyone here? Nathaniel Altfeather of Town of Dunn.
Can we postpone?
We have a motion and a second to postpone, the petitioner's not here, and the town hasn't taken action. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's postponed.
That petition will be on the September 5th meeting.
Okay. The Town of Berry's here. Did you get a chance to fill out the sheet?
Yep. So, I think there's a misprint out here where it says, if you answer no or yes, you keep going even if you're a public official. I think you meant to do the opposite. If you're a public official, you probably shouldn't bother filling out the rest of it.
I think you're right.
I will tell the county board.
Yeah, somewhere in there, there's a misprint.
Okay, well, Town of Berry's here, so thank you, Mr. Varda.
Yeah, this is relatively simple. It's meant to correct, it's a group rezone meant to correct anomaly that the state recently decided that A2 didn't qualify for farmland preservation. And we went around and found out who needed it, wanted to keep it, and with the assistance of the people in zoning that identified A4 as the appropriate place to move them so they could keep their farmland preservation. Years past, it used to be if somebody broke something out of a A1 exclusive, the remainder would get almost automatically made A2. But the state doesn't like that anymore, so we've got to change it so they can preserve their farmland preservation rights. That's all there is to this.
And so, you think this takes care of everybody?
Everybody that wanted to. We contacted everybody who was affected by it and polled them as to whether they wanted to go to A4, and explained to them what that would mean, and about 50% wanted to go to A4, and the others didn't care to do that. So, we only included those in the application who wanted it.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval. I'll second, just a quick question for staff. I'm just curious, because we went through the whole recertification process a year or two ago. I would have guessed that these kinds of properties would have been picked up in that. So, I'm just curious how it might have been missed, and should we be concerned in other towns where there's folks?
There is probably be, all the petitions that are less than, or all the petitions prior to us creating A-4 were zoned A-2 and deed restricted. And they were all the remnant parcels under 35 acres in size. That would not be picked up by DATCAP because they just show that area as non-certified. So, it is illegal zoning.
Right, but I thought we were picking those up, because we had to update our maps and so...
The last...
And we knew that DATCAP wasn't going to be recognizing A2.
Yes, there is, for farmland preservation, the last go-around was the peripheral areas around urban service areas. So, a mile and a half out, DATCAP wanted us to match up the village or city plans with the zoning classification. So, that was the first wave that went through. The next one will be more defined on the substandard parcels and, but with the introduction of the new zoning code, there will be new zoning maps made, and a lot of that, a lot of those errors are going to be corrected.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, it's basically, it puts it back where we all thought it was.
Other questions? Todd, did you have something?
I was just going to clarify that it's obvious that A2 is not a certified district for receiving tax credits, so, you know, I don't know in our prior review of the maps if we would have picked up A2 parcels that were previously A1 exclusive, that were downsized, and then a deed restriction was placed on them. I just don't think, you know, the mapping initiative was sophisticated to pick up that prior intent. So, I think what Todd Berry is doing is a reasonable approach to remedy this. A4 is a certified, A certified district, a sub-35 acre district that qualifies and will receive those tax credits. But we can double-check with Brian to see to what extent our efforts would have picked up something like that. But that's a pretty, that's a subtlety that I don't know that I'm aware of. Roger?
With the new mapping, we're looking at the aerial photos to see if the parcel is under 35 acres. Well, if they were zoned A2, we're taking a closer look at those to see if they should be in the farmland preservation. But Brian Standing has been working on revising the maps and going through the entire area. If it's a crop area, it's getting the certified unless it's on, you know, RH.
I just raised a question, so, I mean, I assume that most people would, if they had their own classification, they'd be aware that they would have, they're aware of the opportunity for the tax credits and that would flush it out. But maybe there's property owners that aren't aware that they have the opportunity to do a tax credit, but for the fact that they have the wrong zoning.
People in zoning were, you know, good with us and got this thing straight, and I think the information's out there. It's kind of an anomaly from years past. I mean, the state didn't really think A2 was not proper for farmland preservation for a long time. They just certified, they didn't have any problem with it. And now they're picking it up and deciding that, no, that really doesn't work, so, but, you know, the department did a good job in informing us, telling us how to correct it. We got out there, as I'm sure other towns are doing, and we're probably the first one in on this, but you'll see other people in to get it straightened out.
Yeah, that's what I mean, it'll be flushed out.
Yeah, they're going to lose one year. That's the only problem, is they lose one year of the farmland tax credits, but they'll be back on next year.
Okay, any further discussion?
The public notification would have been the way that that would have been flushed out if there were property owners that really wanted to continue that, and they were savvy enough to identify that as how it would have been caught corrected. So, but we'll double-check again with Brian and see if that was on his radar and how aware we were at that time.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Thanks. Next is rezone petition 11,179, Alice Asselson.
Asselson.
Pleasant Springs.
My address is 1747 Con Road, Township Pleasant Springs, Stone. I'm here to separate the old farmhouse from the farmland, and that address is 2409 Asselson Road.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Pleasant Springs has approved this petition with conditions. The agricultural easement shall be recorded to allow access to adjacent farmland from driveway. The single-family residents and associated... residents and associated septic shall be located on the proposed lot, and the lot shall, there'll be a deed restriction placed on the property that the lot shall not be divided, a new parcel cannot include, let's see, the new parcel cannot include the drainage ditch to allow ag preservation and maintain to farmer or renter. And the drive access has to be sixty-six feet.
Are you okay with all those words in there? I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions that the city, is it the city? That the city of Stoughton?
Town of Pleasant Springs.
Town of Pleasant Springs.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve, discussion with the conditions? Say none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved, thanks for coming. Okay, from our previous meetings, rezon petition eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-seven, Janet Hoops in the Town of Cross Plains.
Yes, this petition was postponed at the July twenty-fifth zoning and land regulation committee due to no county action, since that time, the Town of Cross Plains has approved this petition with no conditions, there's one item that the lots, some of the A2 parcels are over thirty-two acres in size, and they should be deed restricted to prohibit further division. And Mrs. Hoops is here, if you have any questions?
Yes.
Question of staff, the staff report, some of the, even though we don't have town action, there's also a recommendation last time from staff to postpone because of some concerns on size of lot and so forth, so you just mentioned one remedy, and that's the deed restriction.
Yes, the deed restriction, we did take a look at the location of the houses and they seemed reasonable, this is somewhat dark, you have, you do have this on your computers that may be a little bit lighter, but it does show an approximate location of the houses.
Is the petitioner okay with those conditions that?
Well, I'm still trying to understand what was just said, to tell you the truth. What was this about it being thirty-two acres? All of those parcels are thirty-five acres or more.
That's correct, so, the large parcels will be zoned A-2, that means that the minimum, so the zoning says that you could have a minimum of a sixteen acre lot, however, these lots are over thirty-five acres in size. So, we don't want, the zoning could potentially allow the lot to be divided and another house to be placed on that large parcel, but you don't, you do not have enough of housing density rights, you only have, I believe, four housing density rights on your property, so the property cannot be divided.
This is all news to me.
Yes, they're all, yes, they're, you could have four lots, yes, and that's all, and we want to make sure that no one in the future, right, comes in and tries to divide the lot.
Why?
Because there's no more housing density rights left on the property.
See, that's a new term to me, I'm sorry, I just had.
Oh, there's no more splits.
I knew that.
Okay, that's, housing density right is a split, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sorry, so, yeah, there's no more splits, so we don't want them to split the lots any further, that's basically about it.
Did you have any other questions or?
Yeah, I don't.
Well, I do have one question, if in the future, the town allows more density, will this restrict the person whoever owns it at that time from going with that new ruling?
Roger?
The deed restriction has methods to amend it or terminate it, and one of them is to rezon the property, so they would have to come through the prop, through the rezoning process again, and then that would terminate that deed restriction.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
So the other concern in the staff report was regarding the location of future building sites and driveways, I don't have that image in my pack, I don't know if it's been updated, but I've been having trouble.
I can't really, I, doesn't the person who buys the land get to decide where the house goes?
Well, I'm just raising a concern from, that was in our report from last time, so I just wanted to understand the lot layout and what's concerns and problems that may cause.
That isn't showing up on seller?
I don't have that.
It's not showing up yet.
I, I'm lost here. Would you please clarify your question?
Well, it was just going off of the last, so our last meeting, we postponed for a couple of reasons, one, primarily the town hadn't acted, but staff had, or zoning staff had described a couple areas of concern, one was the size of the lot, which we just got done talking about, and the other was, was the staff had requested additional information regarding location of future building sites and driveways.
But how can I know where the person will want to put the house?
Well, primarily, I want to know that the lots are designed or proposed such that there's, you know, sufficient road access and.
Oh, sure.
When I was looking at the drafts, there's two different versions of the draft, as I was here, showing different lot configurations, so I wasn't real clear on, because to me it looked like one lots.
This is the one that was, that we decided on, I wish, I wish that Dan could be here, the surveyor, to explain it, but.
And I got this late Friday.
There is a driveway that goes, that enters, you can't see it on that drawing.
There's going to be a future driveway here that's going to be shared by two houses, two house, one house is going to go here, one house is here, there is existing lot here for the existing house, and the other lot, I believe, is over here, which accesses onto dark road, yeah, dark road.
Yes, it does, but where the driveway is, is, you see that, that little building right beside the driveway there, that, that thirty, that is more than thirty-five acres, I've forgotten exactly, maybe forty-seven, but the house is just on the other side of the driveway at the top, the farmhouse. Yeah, right in there. And the driveway itself, the new driveway, would enter at my existing driveway, and then you would go east to the new, to the new area that runs north, north-south. They did not want us to put another cut in the, in the road, because it's on a hill, I personally didn't, don't think that it would have interfered, since there is already a driveway on the other side of the street, but, and there's, and it's quite, it's very visible, but anyway, that they didn't want to cut there, so we had to bring, bring the entrance in through the existing driveway.
So, Roger, can you help me understand, so there's going to be a shared driveway, does that mean we have two lots in common ownership, and that's why we're not looking at either a waiver request or?
All.
Not unless somebody buys the two lots.
Each lot has frontage, however, they're going to have a joint driveway, a joint driveway easement, so.
Okay, well, that's what I was trying to figure out, because to me it looks like Lot Three doesn't have frontage.
No, they have, they have frontage down here.
Close to the road.
Yeah, they have, it goes right down to the road here.
So that's a flag lot?
Pretty much.
Well, it would run down and then it would, and then we have to have a jog there that would run to the existing driveway, because they won't let us go on J.
And then, Roger, all the space below Lot Three there is basically one lot then?
That's correct, the Lot Three is like this.
Okay, all right. So I was looking at the drawings of the pack that it looked like.
Kind of hard to see.
Right, sorry, flag lot, so.
Right, no, it's.
All right, thank you. That was, that was.
Take me for, yes. We're in the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions that the Town of Cross Plains has.
Where the A2 lots be deed restricted to prohibit further division?
And you're okay with the deed restriction?
Well, as long as they can be reversed in the future if the rules change.
That is correct.
That is, that's fair.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor of approval with the conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved, thank you, you're welcome, thanks for coming, this is your third time coming?
I think it's the second.
It is just the second, I knew I recognized it. Okay, next is Plattsum Certified Survey Maps.
Do you want to see if that one's tabled?
Oh.
Yeah.
Did you register to speak?
Nice to meet you.
Did you?
No.
Who are you?
Mandalik.
Okay, we postponed yours when, because you were actually the first item.
We moved from the table petition.
One forty-three.
Eleven thousand one hundred and forty-three and CUP twenty-three eighty.
And you'll need to fill out one of these forms, they're back there, but, go ahead and have a seat. If we can get you to fill out a form, so you're here for rezon eleven thousand one hundred and forty-three and CUP twenty-three eighty?
Yeah.
Okay, you want to tell us about?
Technically.
Well, did you, thank you, go ahead.
We tabled it by motion, this move to remove from the table.
And I second that.
Yeah, and all in favor of?
Taking it off the table.
Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, go ahead. All right, you're here for the petition, so if you'd tell us your name, your address, and why you want to do what you want to do.
My name's Robert Mandalik, and I'm at thirty-four twenty-four Lake Farm Road, Madison, Wisconsin, and I've been living on that property for over thirty years, and I run a roofing company, and I've had that for thirty years, and my son's been working for me for the last probably eight years, and he's, he's taking over the business when I retire, so I'll probably retire in like seven years, and him and his wife are interested in living in that house, and that'd be great, and I can build a new house in the back, I want to buy it up into three parcels, one's farmland, one's kind of stays the same, and then I want to have residents in the back.
Anything else?
That's about it, you know, I mean, I would like him to be able to, you know, live there, run the business, and I can give him a hand for a few more years, and then, you know, if he decides to sell it to a landscaper or something like that, it's, you know, the perfect place.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And just to let you know, Bob Upoff was here, and he wasn't speaking in opposition or in support, he was just expressing his concern about the future uses of the land, anyone else want to say anything else, add to what, okay, Roger?
The Town of Living Grove has approved both the zoning petition and the conditional use permit, staff is suggesting that a deed restriction be placed on the property, the LC one property, to deed restrict the uses to contractor business, transportation businesses, building trade businesses, and landscaping operations, this is also a recommended condition by the City of Madison. With regards to the conditional use permit, we suggest one condition, that the, the single-family residents on the LC one property be inhabited by the business owner or to be used as, for activities related to the business, just such as an office.
I don't care with that.
I'm going to move both the petition and the CUP be approved with those conditions that were expressed by staff. And the.
I'll second, because both.
So you can.
Should we take those up separately?
Pardon me, you want to take them up separately?
Yeah, like that, that would be more clear.
If you do the rezon, the CUP is contingent upon.
We'll do the CUP first?
Rezon first.
Rezon first, okay, I'm going to restate my approval, I'm going to recommend that we approve it with the conditions on the rezon only.
Okay, second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the rezon with conditions, any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, I'm going to move.
Rezon's approved.
Thank you, I'm going to move that we approve the CUP with the conditions.
Contingent upon the rezoning being approved.
Correct.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve the CUP with the conditions and the rezon being approved. Any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Okay.
And you still need to fill out a form, just that we have at record that you were here and you did speak in support of your petition. Okay, now, Certified Surveyments.
Yeah, the first one is a final plat, Town of Middleton, titled The Welcome Homes. This consists of fourteen residential lots with two outlots and a little over eighteen acres, current zoning is A1, staff recommends the following conditions that will be applicable in approving the final plat, Kurt Codel has reviewed this plat with regards to the comprehensive plan, everything is in compliance from that standpoint, public parkland appropriation requirement is to be satisfied, I'm fairly certain fees are being paid to the town in lieu of, since there is no lands being shown as dedicated as parkland, all streets shall be noted as dedicated as, dedicated to the public, and then outlots appear to be reserved for stormwater management, the outlots will be owned and maintained by the Welcome Homes Neighborhood Association, and Outlot Two is subject to a public recreational trail easement over its entirety, we've had this discussion in the past, technically, the outlot does not have the proper required, required road frontage of sixty-six feet, so we're just suggesting from the preliminary plat, and a notice to be designated on Outlot Two that just states no development is allowed on Outlot Two. And then all the other conditions are to be met when that timeframe comes with regards to road control and stormwater prior to the land being disturbed.
Additional approval?
We have a motion and a second for conditional approval, any discussion? Say none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved, commission.
Next one is a final plat that is looking for the signature by the chair, this is Spruce Hollow Replat Number One, Town of Middleton, Section Twenty, consists of twelve residential lots, eleven point nine acres, and all the conditions have been met or will be met. This is the one, just to kind of bring you up to speed off of Middle Point Road, kind of across this medium, quick trip. There was a lot reconfigurations, they were terminating the access onto County Highway S or Middle Point Road, so.
Questions?
I'll move approval for final signature.
We have a motion and a second for final signature, any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor say aye. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. And I will sign. And salvage yard permits.
Yes, this is our annual report with regards to the salvage yards throughout the, throughout Dane County. For the most part, they're all the same, except there is one new one that was added this past year. And that's the Fair Everie located in the town of Dunkirk. It's a fairly new one. So all the other ones are, for the most part, the same as they were in the previous years. There's a couple that are more or less stockpiling versus exchange or recycling. There's Michael Catrano, the one loaded, located in the town of Christiana, just west of Cambridge. He's probably got maybe one or more, two years left in the salvage yard business. There really isn't a whole much, a lot, lot, lot left as far as salvage vehicles. Richard Deal located in the town of Vienna, that's a legitimate operation where stuff is coming in and it's leaving just as fast. So it's quite the operation there. That's the report.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to.
Does that require action?
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to have action as far as approval because they do have to renew their licenses each year.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? It's approved. Got one. Certified survey map, hold on. Oh, that, yeah, thank you. Your report?
Yeah, yeah.
That is the current list of the Certified Survey Maps that had been approved and signed since the last time we met.
Good question. The one that just popped out, I mean, just simply because of the number of acres, it's a 44 acres. So was that like an A2 that was a large or what?
Well, that was the one where, that was just north of the quarry. It was basically a lot line adjustment between the two. The neighbor to the west was acquiring additional lands from KCJ LLC. And then the remaining lands were Lot 2 of the Certified Survey Map.
Okay, so that was, so that was one we had prior rezoning.
Yes.
And just note, as was recommended, since we had to take action on the salvage yard permits, then it probably should have been under H.
Oh, okay, sure.
Okay, anything else for Dan? Any other business? Seeing none? All in favor of German, say aye. And we are German.